Six o'clock right now. Good evening, Williamsburg County citizens and members of county council. Do we have a good sound check for our social media sites? As well as our conference line? Can they still call in the number or we're already using that number for Mr. Huck? Okay, citizens that are needing to use the conference call can call at 877-309-2073. That access code is 590-380-589. We're going to go ahead and call our regularly scheduled meeting for April 19th to order. Invocation will be done by Councilman Floyd.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we just bow before you on this beautiful day, on your humble servant, giving you the glory for all the great things you have done for us, Lord. Now that we gather as bodies to govern this county, Lord, we just ask you of this wisdom and knowledge and that all we do be pleasing in your sight and benefit the citizens of this county. We ask all these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Floyd. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled council meeting that was held April 4th, 2022. We need a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move, Madam Supervisor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. Oppusers, the same. The motion is carried. At this point, gentlemen, I'm sorry, as far as, and ladies, as far as the ordinances, we do not have none today. Our actual second reading of our budget is not scheduled until May, so we will not be having second reading of the ordinance for the budget. Our next order of business is our resolutions. Resolution number 2022-03, a resolution hereby designating April as Fair Housing Month in Williamsburg County. So we need a motion for approval of that resolution.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution number 2022-03, please signify by raising your hand. Oppusers, the same. The motion is carried. Our next order of business is resolution number 2022-04. I just need to give you a little bit of background on that. Obviously, you know, over the past, our Behavior Health Center was, the funding was removed from DAODIS, so we ended up having to close our doors. Over the past year since we closed our doors, I've been working closely with DAODIS, which is the state agency that is the funding source for behavior health organizations throughout the state. Usually in cases, what we faced with some of the compliance issues, it's not often that they're going to reopen another center in the same county. Usually they make it a regional type of operation that goes on. But fortunately, with our persistence, it actually paid off and DAODIS is giving us another chance. We will be reopening the behavioral facility in Williamsburg County under the direction of Circle Park Behavior Health. The location will be in the Hemingway area at the Chavis One Stop location. Oftentimes, you all know that when services do come to Williamsburg County, it usually goes to King Street, but I felt that it would be better for us to begin to try to get some foot traffic down at the Hemingway location. So we are going to open the Hemingway location, plus the statistics and data to support it, our need in the Hemingway area. We will open another one sometime later in the King Street area as soon as we can get a facility, lock in on a facility. They have already began hiring counselors and their issue of staffing is not going to be an issue in this case. In fact, they were very surprised that they had that many people that applied for the position that were qualified. They will be moving in, starting in May, May 1st area. We are looking for a soft opening sometime in May, and then a ribbon cutting and an official opening will be towards the end of May. Any discussion? Any questions? None?
So move, Madam Chair.
So, hold on. What you had ahead of time, I believe Mr. Jenkins has sent you, was their contract for them to provide the services in our county and at the location of Chavis One Stop. So that is what we are voting on, accepting their contract and their services in our county. So now, we need a motion for approval of the contract. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Circle Park now becoming our new behavior health in Williamsburg County and under the contract at the Chavis One Stop, please signify by raising your hand. Oppusers, the same. The motion is carried. They will also be joining us our next council meeting, so you have an opportunity to meet their staff and ask any questions. All the services will be the same as we had, if not, a few additional ones will be added with them. Our next order of business is appearances. We have, oh, sorry. No, I skipped one. Y'all know I be getting through this quick. Now, Mr. Lee, you really shouldn't have never let me get to almost get past this one, right? We have resolution number 2022-05, a resolution authorizing Williamsburg County to enter into a construction contract with Metro Dwelling LLC for the construction and completion of the Chavis Wellness Center located at the existing Chavis One Stop facility located in Hemingway. We need a motion for approval of that resolution.
So move, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution 2022-05, please signify by raising your hand. Oppusers, the same. The motion is carried. So, Mr. Lee, you now will start the process of preparing our area for the new center. Our next order of business, we will schedule all that. Probably in the next few, maybe next two weeks or so. Our next order of business is appearances by Mr. Ken Holt of our, he's our airport consultant. It's in reference to an airport grant regarding hangars. However, we will have Mr. Whiteside come up first and give us a little history.
As you know, I'm still connected with the airport. I want to take you back about five years and we'll make it brief and very concise because the important thing is where are we now and where do we want to go? But you may wonder, why haven't we done some of this sooner than this particular time? In 2016 and 17, we planned for additional hangar space, having just completed the 10 T-hangers, which we opened, I think, in 2015. They have remained occupied, rent paid. Demand for additional hangars has been considerable the whole time, but larger airplanes are needing hangar space that cannot fit into the T-hanger. So in 2000, early 2018, we obtained a grant from the FAA to build two box hangars, 60 by 60. This project was brought right up to the point of almost having the building delivered. Unfortunately, our contractor and our engineer, who were in-house people, died in a plane crash. The plane went down, disappeared, was never found, and that was Mr. Haddock and Mr. Urban Lambert. Lambert being the contractor, Haddock being the engineer of the project. So we were right at the point of starting. Mr. Paisley had signed the grant award. Everything was good to go, but we couldn't go because we had no contractor, we had no engineer. And in order to get an engineer, you have to advertise, go through a long process, plus the FAA did not particularly like the looks of the in-house operation, and they took us over some colds because of that, which we came out just fine, there was no problem. But we were pretty much forbidden to try to do it that way again with people who had a specific interest in the project. So during the early part or mid-part of 2019, we were able to connect with Holt Consultants. Mr. Ken Holt, the principal of that company, is here with us tonight, and we have engineered and prepared to build either three, four, or five box hangars, approximately the same size of the original, little smaller, because what determines the size of a hangar space is the size of the aircraft, obviously. And if you have an aircraft that has 60-foot wingspan, you can't put it in a 50-foot building. So we try to do, we do have people who want the hangar, they're waiting for it. We've turned some people away. We have a couple of residents here in the county who are actually waiting and keeping their airplane somewhere else temporarily. But we're at the point where we take bids this past year, and the bids are so high that there's no way to do it. What should have been $800,000 or $900,000 came in a million and a half, obviously because of the pandemic, the price of steel, the price of lumber, the price of everything which you see and read about every day. So we had to hold off, we didn't get any bidders. I had one bidder, which was twice the price we could stand. So we reexamine that beginning this year, and I would like to have Mr. Holt come up to explain that. In addition, in attendance, we have several members of our Airport Commission, Mr. Scott Williamson in the center. Would you stand, Mr. Williamson, and introduce the other members of the commission who are here? They're here to observe and support this project.
I will, y'all stand when I call your name. Mr. Herman Parker, Mr. John Hudson, Will Hannah, and Guy McClear. This is not all your commission, but this is just here to sit tonight. We got three or four of them. We're not able to be with the fair tonight, but I do want y'all to know that these are faithful servants of this county. They serve because they appreciate the airport, they appreciate aviation, they understand the importance of their county, and I think they deserve a round of applause.
Unless you have questions for me, I went over this chronology very fast, but it's important now that we either go ahead with the project. If not, we probably will not be able to do it anytime soon. The reason being, other needs that will come up at the airport, such as runway resurfacing and so forth, will take charge of that money that we're trying to use for the revenue-producing hangar space. So, Mr. Holt, would you come up unless there's any question for me?
Yes, Mr. Whiteside. Good to see you again. One question. Are all the hangars that we have available, are they in use? And if so, how many total do we have?
We have 10 spaces, which are called T-hangers. That's the way they're arranged in the building. One building, 10 hangars. Yes, they're all in use. We have waiting list of five people, and they rent for $150 a month, and you get one month free if you pay a year at a time.
Okay.
So we basically take in, you know, what was that, $16,500 a year on the hangars, and they're all rented, they're all paid. We had a little wrinkle when Mr. Haddock died. His son was in one of the hangars, and we had some difficulty about that. Some of you may remember that, but that's been resolved long ago, and all the hangars are in use. Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteside. Madam Chair, councilwomen and councilmen, thank you very much for this opportunity. As Mr. Whiteside said, last year we bid the project, we ended up with one bidder, and it was very high prior to the pandemic, and the FAA made the decision that we should not move forward with this project at that time. So this year, we rebid the project, and as Mr. Whiteside alluded to, we did it with a base bid of three hangars, an additive bid of one hangar, and another additive bid of one more hangar. So it gave us that flexibility to fit the budget the best we could. Surprisingly, we had quite a bit of interest in this project. We ended up with five bidders, and we evaluated the two lowest bidders, because what we have to do is select the lowest responsive bidder. So we evaluate them for their, with regard to their responsiveness to the requirements of the bid documents, and we determined that the lowest bidder was the lowest responsive bidder. So what's, one other thing that's different from last year is the introduction of the bipartisan infrastructure law. So Williamsburg County receives an annual allocation of $110,000 a year for five years through this bipartisan infrastructure law. In addition to that, what Williamsburg County receives for the airport are entitlement funds at $150,000 a year. You can accumulate up to four years of entitlement funds, so we have a $600,000 balance in entitlements. Plus, we have this year, $110,000 in bipartisan infrastructure law money. So the difference would be, we've got a little bit of participation by the state, South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. They do not participate in hangars except for the site work, so we, they have a very small participation level, so the rest is local. I don't know if you have the spreadsheet. Should I pass these out?
Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Holt.
Yes, sir.
You alluded to the fact that you were selecting the lowest bidder, but will that satisfy the needs of the airport and the commission?
Yes.
At that bid?
Yes, sir. Passes muster with the state and the FAA as well. So everyone, what we do in our evaluation, we go through a matrix of all the information we look at with regard to the two lowest bidders, and if we hadn't have found that one was responsive, then we would have gone to the third lowest, but we found one that was. So all that information is documented and provided to the FAA and the state, as well as, of course, Williamsburg County.
And what would be the timeline once you start the building to complete it?
So if we move forward with this project, what we, what we will have to do is wait on the FAA to issue a grant agreement to Williamsburg County. That's the first step. Then, after we receive that, we'll submit an application for a grant with South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, and once we have that, then we're ready to basically enter in, or Williamsburg County will enter into a contract with the contractor. We'll issue, we'll have a pre-construction conference, issue a notice to proceed, and I believe we're estimating that this project will take 120 days.
Okay, thank you.
So to put it on a calendar, we're probably looking at getting started sometime in October, by the time all those steps are completed. Okay, so on the spreadsheet, what you see here is, first of all, we provided information on five hangars, four hangars, and three hangars. What we're showing there is the lowest bid price is the next column, and for each one of those scenarios, the next 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 columns are what we call construction phase services. Those are services that are required to be completed to satisfy the FAA and the state in terms of receiving their money. As we're showing here, all those services, or at least the estimates you see here, those services are services we would provide, with the exception of construction inspection, which I believe the county is considering handling those services. So those are the costs. You have the bid price, the construction phase services, and the next side of the spreadsheet are the grants. That's the income, I guess you'd say. I mentioned non-primary entitlement funding is $600,000 in all three cases. FAA state apportionment funding, I'm showing zero there. The FAA had indicated at one point in time that they hoped that they could find about $150,000, and that number went down to closer to 100, and then after several of the planners at the FAA discussed it, they felt it wasn't eligible for state apportionment, so it went down to zero. The next federal money that we're showing is that bipartisan infrastructure law, or BIL, funding, which is 110, and that's the same with every scenario. State funding, that is their share of the site work, not only the construction, but a certain percentage of the construction phase services, and that stays the same for all three scenarios because the site work will be done for three, four, or five regardless. And then that leaves local funding. So as you can see, for five hangars, the remaining balance would be about $880,000. For four, it'd be about $655,000, and for three, it would be $418,000. However, you can self-fund this project, that portion of it, or a portion of that, with your bill money. So you're going to get another 110 for four years, or $440,000. So you can self-fund a portion of this project through a bond or some other means, and then you can pay yourself back a year at a time, $110,000. So the, next to the last column indicates, if you, if you went with five and you paid yourself back with all of your bill money, bipartisan infrastructure law money, you would have a total investment here locally of about $440,000. For four hangars, you'd have a total investment of about $215,000, and for three hangars, you'd have a total investment of $106,000. With three hangars, if you decided to go that route, you'd actually have some additional bipartisan infrastructure law money that would just be applied to the next project. But we'll have to capture that in no later than 2026, because that's when the law expires. When it expires, the money goes away. So that's the intent, is that money will be captured in the next project. Also, I'll point out, you can see where our estimate was, which is the box on the far left. We came pretty close to the lowest responsive bidder, and you can make the comparison there. I think we were, depending upon the scenario, we were between, we ranged between $20,000 and $70,000 difference. Our estimate was lower in each case. Yes, sir.
And following you with the money just now, I was with you all the way until you got to the last column, it said net local funding requirement after reimbursement of future bipartisan infrastructure law allocation. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And we have $439,000 local funding for five hangars, $215,000 local funding for four hangars, and the column has minus $21,000 for three hangars, which looks like an excess of money to fund the project. Then you said we owe $106,000.
That's right.
So how do we jump from minus 21 to 106?
That's a good question. So you have to match the, this project, in terms of the spreadsheet, it gets very complicated because you've got the site work where you have to match at 5%. The state matches 5%, and the FAA matches at 90%, okay?
Okay.
Then you have the hangars, and that is where the state does not participate. So it's, you have to match that cost at 10%, and that's the minimum. So you'll have, you'll have to match a certain portion of this, is somewhere between, it's probably about 9.5%, because of that difference between the site work and the 5% share coming from the state and the rest of it, with none coming from the state and 10% coming from the county. So to make this all work out, you, there is a minimum amount that the county has to match. So, and I know that's confusing, the reason we put that, highlighted that cell is because that's telling us that can't be. And what is it? That's where this box down here, when we went through this calculation to figure out what the minimum amount was.
In other words, there has to be a local funding match, even if you have excess amount of money for the project. It's still got to be a certain percentage matched locally.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, you wanted to say something? So I believe what they are looking for is, basically, I think the county will have to front them $418,000 in that column where it says local funding upfront, and then over the course of the four years, five years, four years, four years, you all will be paying obviously that down for us. So it's very similar to what we did for the hospital bond, in which we upfronted the cost, and with the millage money that was coming in, we were paying off that bond. That's basically what it is as far as that part of it. The other part is, yes, the county will have to come up with their portion of it, but that can be made up with the rental cost, the rental fees that they're charging monthly for the rental of the hangars.
That difference that we would have to come up with would be the $106,000, is that correct?
Yes.
So, how often?
For the three hangar, if we decide on the three, if you all decide on the three hangars, that's what it would come up to.
So right now, I think we're collecting, I think if I remember correctly, about $16,000 a year in revenue. So to pay that $106,000 off, how long do we have to pay that? Because I understand fronting with the bond and everything, but with the $106,000, and, because it's not a lot of revenue, how much time would we have to pay that off?
Four years, right? Something like that.
Not sure I'm understanding the question.
Okay, so she, with the, so the $106,000 and $160,000, $160.43, over the next four years, how long, given the fact that we have hangar rental, which was roughly, what'd he say, $16,000 a year? 16,000 a year? How long do we have to pay off the 106, 160, 43?
And am I understanding that they will be reimbursing the county for that 106?
They can a portion of it.
I'm asking, and feel free to clue me in, because I know that we're kind of like in a pickle with the budget already. So my thing is, are we in a position to be able to give away $106,000 and wait for it to be reimbursed? That's a simple question, I guess.
One of the, one of the, the good part of it is that you do have funding that is available to help them under the American Rescue Plan funding.
Okay.
So we can help them with that, that portion of it. That's going to be some time down the line, though. But what we are concerned about and what we're going to be raising right now is the fact that, is the county going to do a bond for 418? Do we have the capacity to do it at 418? And do we even want to do a bond, or do we want to try something different? Because I don't like bonds because they double over on you with all the interest and all that kind of stuff. So before we actually enter into something like this and get to the point of where we're signing the final documentation, I think Mr. Billy is looking at our, talking with our bond attorney and our finance chief, and I am looking for another option with us not having to do a bond.
And I agree with what you're saying, Madam Supervisor. It would be great, I'm actually in the process of reading that American Rescue Relief Act, it's 111 pages, and to look for funding. But it would be great if we could find money there. That would be awesome. I don't know if we can. How long of a timeline, Mr. Holt? I mean, is this, do we have to apply for this grant? Do we need to make a decision? When do you need to know something from us?
So the application process was due last week. They have applied for it. Where we can be approved for it, was it last week or before last? We have to be approved for it first. So before we sign, you all do the resolution for me to sign the grant and approve it, that's when you're stuck to the deal.
So we've, we sent in the grant application, and we based it on four hangers. I talked to the FAA to make sure that if you decided, if you determined that four was beyond your financial capacity, could we scale it back to three? And they said yes. So, but the grant will be the same amount because you're only getting the non-primary entitlement and the bill, so it'll be the same amount. So time-wise, I think we could probably anticipate a grant agreement coming your way maybe in June, and that'll be the time. Until that point comes, you're not obligated.
And the reason I ask that question is because we have to have our budget done, as everyone here knows, by June. So we all will be looking at numbers in the next two months, and that's why I was asking. Okay?
Well, once you receive the grant agreement, you don't have to act right away.
Okay.
There'll be some time. I don't know what that would be, but it might be a month, it might even be two. But we definitely had to have to sign this, I'd say, a month before the end of the federal fiscal year. So that would mean the end of August. The FAA gets real nervous as that fiscal year end is approaching.
So this was, this information session was just to kind of bring you all up to speed to where we were and what we were all working through. Mr. Whiteside?
One point, Grant, um, Mr. Ed, the question was asked about income from the hangers. The 10 hangers, it's a little more than 16,5, because one of those 10 is a little bigger and brings in a little more money. That does not include the land leases that we have, any money we might make on gasoline, which is doubtful right now, but hopefully in the future that'll change, and the money that we would take in on the new hangers. The new hangers would rent for, what did we say, John, around 300?
Yeah, somewhere in that area.
Yeah, so we'd have a lot to add on to that 16,500 that I mentioned. If you, if you need a more accurate projection of what it would be from year to year, that won't be difficult to come up with. We just have to know when we could start renting to new hangers, and when the gasoline price might change, and of course, that may be very difficult to determine. Thank you.
Have another question.
Mr. Whiteside, you also mentioned the future projects that you may have. How far in the future are those projects out before you have to have something to do with them?
The project I'm particularly concerned about will be resurfacing the runway, which is a lot of money. We don't, we don't pay that from the county, but we would take the money that we now have the grant assurance of to use for that if we don't use. Mr. Holt explained that a little better than I do. We do a CPI, a projection for five years, and Mr. Holt could explain when he thinks that might kick in and keep us from building the hangers. That's your question, I believe.
So right now, we have a five-year capital improvement plan. That's required every year that it gets updated by the FAA. And I believe that that runway rehabilitation project design is scheduled for 2026. Okay? And then, so the way the FAA likes these projects to evolve is design one year, construct the next year. So we design it and bid it, and bid it right before, if we know that we're going to have the money from the FAA to construct it. And then in the next year, which would be 2027, if we were able to effectively compete for discretionary money to build the project, then it would happen. So this project we're talking about here with the hangers is a little bit different in terms of the rules of how the, how you calculate the FAA share. Runway is a lot simpler. It's basically 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local.
And so if you have, given the fact that we want to do this project, would there be another grant available for that, future project?
Yes. So what you're doing is every year, you will receive $150,000 in non-primary entitlement funding, but you can accumulate more than four years, which is where you are right now. So once this project, if it moves forward, this hangar project, then we'll have two or three years, have to look at the CIP, where we're beginning to accumulate the 150 every year. So that design, you'll already have enough federal money to design and bid the project. It's the construction that gets expensive, and that's where we have to go for what they call discretionary money. And that's competitive. And it's all based on the priority of the project, how it falls, and how much money FAA has. So all we can do is plan for it, but exactly what's going to take place is maybe another thing. We'll just see. We stay in close contact with the FAA every year with these projects.
Mr. Holt, excuse me, with counsel, I think it goes along, if you don't have airplanes on the airport, your money goes completely. If you have no airplanes, your money is dead. Isn't that how it works almost the time?
That's correct. Yes, sir. So there are five categories within this document called the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems. The first category is, I'm trying to remember the name of it now. You fall down below a certain amount of aircraft, and unclassified is the, and then the next, next one is basic, what Williamsburg County is. So you're just one above the unclassified. So unclassified gets no entitlement money. So the 150 would go away if you went down. So having in your base aircraft are the basis of it.
Mr. Holt, one other thing, I think the council would be interested in knowing, how much money do we have invested in this project right now? Not county money, but money, grant money. The match was forgiven because of COVID, but just explain to them how much we have into it right now if we abandoned it and did nothing.
I think it's about 150,000 roughly.
I would say so, 160 something now.
Yeah. That's right.
All this planning costs money, and the whole company has been paid to do that. So there's already been costs incurred, which do not have to be repeated, correct? Most of them.
Yes, only the bidding.
Is I have a question. This is just a general question for my information. I realize that the airport, we generate monies or revenue from the hangers. Is there any other source of revenue that's generated at the airport?
At the present time, it would be the land leases we have. Three different people who own the building that's on the airport property, and they pay an annual lease to have us there. And hopefully, we would have some profit from gasoline. Oh, I'm sorry. Hopefully, we would have some profit from gasoline, because we are selling 7,000 or 8,000 gallons of gasoline in a year. Now, the way the gasoline has done this year has worked greatly against us, obviously, because we bought, we bought and sold when it was low, now it's high, and now we're down to 1,200 gallons. So we're going to be hitting that the wrong way. But as things even out, we would make, hopefully, 15,000 or 20,000 dollars a year from sale of gasoline, potentially. But any other income would be landing fees, which we don't charge. I believe under the federal law, Mr. Holt, we could charge that, but we don't. So if we got to where we're scraping and wanting to charge everybody for everything, we'd probably have to get somebody to be there all the time and charge landing fees, keep track of who's in and out, as they do in bigger airports.
Okay, because I was just wondering.
No, I don't think that's appropriate, but.
Yeah. Okay, that was just.
Do you think there'd be other source of income, Mr. Holt, that we're missing out on?
The only other thing I can think of worth considering is the economic impact of the airport. So it's not really revenue to you that you can put on a ledger, but there is economic impact the airport generates to this community. And the state conducted a study back in 2018, so it's really not all that old, and I can provide that information if you'd like.
No, that's okay. I know, I realize that this airport is vitally important to the economics of this county, and I was just wondering, was there any other thing we weren't tapping into that we possibly could without having a negative impact on the economics of the county? Because we realize that we could do all we can do to see that we maintain an airport, but I was just wondering, is there any other source that we were not tapping into that's possibly out there?
Well, I've talked with Mr. Fryerson, he agrees, and he's been very supportive of our plans. When a prospect comes to this county, they don't come usually in an automobile down 52 or on the train, they come in an airplane. And a decent-looking and properly-operated airport is a great asset. I think you're all aware of that. And as was mentioned by one of our commission members, the more traffic you have, the more services you have, the better the airport you'll have, and that will morph into a revenue stream for the county at some point in time. Thank you.
Mr. Holt, I would definitely like to see a copy of that report.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Should I, how should that get that to you?
You can send it to me, and I'll forward it. You can send it to me, and I'll forward it.
Okay. Glad to.
Thank you.
One other thing, Madam Supervisor, member of council, I think y'all need to, I'm sure you do understand it, but I want to emphasize it to you. Mr. Holt had already mentioned that this year, we will tap out on the 150,000.
That's correct.
So we're at 600 now. Every year we move this project down the road, we're losing $150,000. Just want to make sure y'all understand that.
That is correct. That money expires. You pick up another 150, but you lose 150.
All right. Does any member of council have anything to say? We will be following up with you all. Again, we just wanted to bring you up to speed so that you all are, have as much knowledge about the project as I do, so.
I would just add, Madam Supervisor, to my colleagues, living as close to the airport I do, I don't think most citizens realize the volume of traffic that comes in and out of there. It is certainly vital to economic development in this area. I actually had a friend of mine from school call me today. He's flying in Thursday night and wants to come over to the house and see me. He's a lobbyist in Columbia. People don't realize how much traffic comes in and out of there. I appreciate what you've done, and most importantly, I appreciate what this commission has done. They put a tremendous amount of effort. These projects just don't get put together. They meet, what, once a month? Is that right? Is that right, Chairman? Roughly once a month. And if, you know, it's something that I certainly would support, and it looks at it, you know, just from the numbers, it looks self-sustaining for the most part, from what I'm hearing. But anyway, we'll look at it, and thank you very much for presenting this to us tonight. Very useful information.
Yes, sir. I did think of one other thing to take into account is property taxes on aircraft that are based here. And these hangers are bigger than, I believe, any that you have now, so that means bigger aircraft, which more than likely means more taxes, property taxes coming into Williamsburg County. It's just one other thing I thought about.
I have one personal question for the commission. Do you all offer flight lessons or intend on offering flight lessons to any citizens that are interested? Because right now, that could be a revenue-generating source, and it could also spark some interest in aviation in the county.
I'm John Hudson, FAA inspector.
Thank you. About a year ago, we started a program with the Carolina Flight School out of Florence. We've had several students in Williamsburg County. We're trying to increase that. One of the things that we're doing, and I run an operation out there also, we're trying to bring the airport into the eyes of the general public. Maybe some of you have never been to the airport. I'm serious. You ought to go see your airport and see what it looks like. I ran the Darlington Airport for a few years, the jet port up there. We have more turbine or jet traffic at Williamsburg Regional Airport than I did at Darlington, and we had two jets based there. It's, it's, our airport is, one time was a county airport, okay? It's not a county airport any longer, it's a regional airport. We're the airport located between Florence and Georgetown or Charleston or Myrtle Beach. Mr. Jack and I, one day, was talking with a group from the FAA, and we made a statement that one day, Williamsburg County was an airport that no one knew where it was at. And now, we're an airport that individuals from the state, the Atlanta ADO, and other individuals come to us wanting information, what we do. And so one of the things we've tried, we've done in the last few years is we continue to add and develop with the airport, and I want to thank Dr. Cooks for all of her assistance in these items that we've done. We've even had fire training at the Williamsburg Regional Airport. We've had two classes, and then COVID came along, and we were actually set it up at that time to do a complete aircraft disaster alert, and where EMS, the fire department, the sheriff's department would all be in on it, and to be able to transport a person from the airport to a hospital. There were so many things that the fire department did not know about aircraft, and so we trained them in those areas. Our last class had 27 individuals in it, and I think that's something to be excited about, because we're slow, and especially the last few years, but we are moving forward. And when we're talking about turbine traffic or jet traffic, we're talking about plantation owners. We're talking about the Moore Foundation. They don't use Florence, they use Williamsburg Regional Airport. And... And so I'd like to invite you out there if you've never been and see what's going on there. But we are doing a training program already. Also, we just celebrated the first graduating drone class. Drones are, are, are going to be the future, especially of cargo, unmanned aircraft. And we just graduated the first three students from the Williamsburg Technical College. And that graduation ceremony took place at the Williamsburg Regional Airport. While that was taking place, we set up a program with the instructor out of Charleston. And they're going to be coming back and they're going to be using your airport to train their students at. Because if anybody can fly a drone, but you can't fly it correctly or legally in an air pattern. And so those are, that's what's taking place. We're moving forward and as Scott's already said, and if you haven't figured it out, I'm a Baptist pastor. As Scott's already said, we're, we are getting to the point that we're about to start losing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And then our entitlements will be consumed in the runway rebuilding project. We're no longer second class, okay? I want you to know that. You've got an airport out there you can be proud of. And I hope we can create some activity in the future with fly-ins and so on. And to bring the public, the general public in contact with the airport and let them know we do have something we're proud of it. And you should be proud of it too. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so am I to understand for flight school, is that to be through the Florence, through the Carolina?
No, actually, at this timeframe, we have two aircraft located at Williamsburg Regional Airport that is being used by Benji Filiol, who is the owner of that flight school. But we have two aircraft. As a matter of fact, our, we just graduated our first solo student.
Awesome.
If you can see God's head swelling up over here, but it was his grandson. And he's just solo. But they're coming to Williamsburg Regional.
Okay.
To do the training for our area. And we're, we're trying to work out a, we're trying to work out a program with aircraft owners to where that, our local aircraft will be used. They won't be coming from Florence because District One and school system in Florence has just started an education, an education program, a flight training facility. So we're trying to get it to where that we're using our own aircraft. That's what I'm saying. We're using our own aircraft, private owners. Are you ready to take lessons?
Right. And so maybe I'm confused. Maybe it's a little hazy for me. Is it hazy for you? I guess my question is, if someone said today, they came up to you, to you awesome gentlemen and said, hey, I want to take flight lessons. I want to become a pilot. Is that possible right now?
Yes.
It is. So.
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking is because I know years ago, I was looking for information on how to do that. So this is a perfect opportunity to put that information out to the people who are watching so that we can get people more involved at the airport.
To start with, if you want information, call eight four three three seven two
Uh-oh.
two two five five.
Two two five five.
And we'll put you in touch with the right people. Because we also do something else with these students. Every one of these guys sitting here is pilots. And we take, when it comes time for inspections, and those aircraft have to be inspected, inspected yearly and wherever so often, every hundred hours. And we take those students into our shop at the Williamsburg Regional Airport. And we work them and let them do the inspection. We work hands-on with them. Maybe someday it'll get to the point that Williamsburg Technical College can be involved in that. There's all kinds of possibilities. But give me a call and I'll put you in touch with the right people.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I will definitely, I'll definitely put that out to the public.
Also, Councilwoman, they don't mind taking you up in their airplanes.
See, that's, that's great to know because I got to be honest with you. I've gone to the airport several times and I've never gotten, it's never open. So I'm intrigued by it and I, and I would love to be able to bring some kids there and get intrigued and get interested in aviation.
If you come home, I'll take you, I'll bring you back with you. No, he's a crop duster.
May I? I visited the airport a few years ago when they had, on one Saturday, some students were able to be flown out and back in. I think Ken Sales was part of his STEM project. And there is a little guy who was there that day and he is determined to study aeronautics. He was taken by that day and he said, Mr. Singleton, I'm going to fly a plane one day, but I'm going to aeronautic school. He said, it was the most awesome experience I'd ever had. So you don't know what minds are out there when you do children. You know, you give them the platform and see what happens. So you might want to consider doing that, continuing that in some form or fashion. Just thought I'd.
That was a great thing to mention, Jeff, because that, that Saturday, a lot of interest was sparked. And so maybe we could look at possibly doing something like that again.
And even doing discovery flights where that generates revenue as well. So I think they charge like ninety-nine, a hundred and fifty dollars in Florence on up to Myrtle Beach, like a hundred and fifty dollars.
Very good. Any other questions, members of council? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Holt. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you, our, our commission members and Mr. Whiteside, for you all coming to the, coming here today to present. Thank you. So again, members, I will have updated information for you as soon as it becomes available. All right? You want to go up there now?
Good evening, Madam Supervisor, members of council. I'm here to talk about money. Now, have your attention. People routinely ask me about the biggest problems in Williamsburg County. And I tell them we have three serious problems. The lack of money, number one. Number two, the lack of money. And number three, the lack of money. Well, this past week, we put a stop on one big hole we had in the budget. I wanted to tell you about it. Last year, our state Supreme Court in its wisdom in a Greenville case passed down a, a ruling that did away with road fees. And as you know, we collect eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year in road fees, every dime of which goes to maintain our roads. And we have around a thousand miles of roads that we maintain in this county. All dirt roads. And those roads are used by people that live on them, by mailmen that live a mail because they're public roads. A lot of them even have our water and sewer on them, our water particularly. They're used by schoolchildren and school buses, mailmen, ambulance, families. And we would be in a mess because we have no ability to raise taxes. That may be a surprise to a lot of people listening, but in two thousand and eight, in the wisdom of our legislature, they said a county cannot raise taxes unless you have a growing population and the Consumer Price Index. Well, the Consumer Price Index eats us up every year. But we'd have a negative growth population, so we have not been able to increase taxes. And the result of that, we did have some fees that thirty-some-odd other counties also did the same thing. And we, and the only other ways taxes have gone up is people improve their houses, the values of the properties have gone up. But as far as increasing any taxes, no. Where am I going with this? This class action lawsuit is McBride versus Williamsburg County and about thirty-some-odd counties. Class action said, give the money back and you can't collect the money anymore. That would have bankrupted our county. And we engaged legal counsel that's representing all of the affected counties, Jim Gillum with Burr Foreman. I know Jim well. We, we've worked on cases together, excellent lawyer. And he's argued two motions already, which were denied to get us out of this lawsuit. And interestingly enough, about three weeks ago, the lead lawyer in that case against us called me. I know him right well. And he said, Billy, I just want Williamsburg County, I love Williamsburg County and they need some help. And they need to settle this case and come up with some money. I told him, I said, if you tell me how to come up with the money, we can talk. He said, what do you mean? I said, we can't raise taxes. And I explained to him just what I told you. He said, you kidding me? No plaintiff's lawyer suing people doesn't like to sue people that got an empty pocket, okay? And I explained to him some facts of life about Williamsburg County and our finances and how we were having difficult times. And he knows it. He's from Barnwell. He lives in a county very much like us. And he said, um, let me think about this and I'll call you back. Called me back last week. He said, we could let Williamsburg County out of this case. And I got an order of dismissal Tuesday. One more step up. We got to keep on keeping on. And I just wanted to share some good news with you and tell you a little bit about it.
So the supervisor owe you a catfish dinner?
All right.
Give God the praise.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Jenkinson, for sharing that with us today. So on the line, in which I probably should have let him go first, was Mr., is Mr. Stuart Huck from the U.S. Department of Rural, of Agriculture and Rural Development. And it's the grant pertaining to the Earls Project. And I think he also has some good news. And we also have our Director Elaine Mixon in the house today as well.
Thank you, Dr. Cooks. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be with y'all tonight. What I have for you is what's called the letter of conditions for the Earl Project. And we've been working on this for some time and we are to the point now where we are ready to fund it. And the letter itself is forty-some-odd pages. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you because we'll be here for quite a while. A lot of the requirements in the letter are the same as in the previous projects that you've done that we've been able to assist you with. I think this is the eleventh one that we've done. So most of the requirements you should be familiar with as far as the audit that's required every year, the insurance certification that you provide us every year. The payments are debited automatically from your account every month. The graduation requirement is the same. Uh, that means that if at any point in the future it appears that you're able to get credit from a conventional lender at reasonable rates and terms, we would ask you to do that. Uh, there's no prepayment penalty on this funding package, just like on the others. The SAM, System for Award Management, online registration is the same. That's due every year. You provide us a vulnerability and emergency response plan assessment every year on the other loans. So that requirement is the same. And there's a conflict of interest policy that you're required to have in place. And that's the same as in, in the other loans as well. I'll, I'll go into a little more detail about the funding package on this particular project. And at any time, if you have any questions, just let me know. Uh, the, again, this is the Earl Project, which is going to consist of construction of about fifty-two miles of waterline, associated fire hydrants and two hundred and sixty new taps on the system. Of course, it was designed in accordance with engineering standards and as presented in the preliminary engine, engineering report that we were provided. The proposed funding for this project is an eight million, three hundred and nineteen thousand dollar loan and a two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. The county's contribution to the project will be one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars. And that's from the estimated two hundred and sixty taps. Tap fees from those estimated taps that'll be in the project. And that's a total cost of eleven million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Now, any change in the project scope, in the cost, or any other significant changes in the project, we need to be made aware of so that we can make changes as appropriate in our funding package. And once we get to the point where we're ready to bid the project, if, if we have enough funds or have funds left over and you have additional work that is within the scope of the project, we could possibly agree to do that. Typically, if you have funds left over, we will de-obligate those, take those funds back once we, once we bid. So we'll, we'll talk more about that once we get to the, into the process of bidding. If bids come back over budget, then we can look at reducing the cost of the project. You can look for funds from other sources or a combination of different things to get back within budget. So we'll, we'll address those issues once we get to the point of actual, take an actual bid on the project. As far as the project costs, they match the proposed funding, eleven million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. That's approximately nine point four million for construction. There's a contingency allowance, construction contingency allowance of ten percent of that amount included. Engineering fees are around four hundred and fifty-four thousand. There's an interest allowance, two hundred and forty-four thousand. There's a legal fee allowance of around fifty-two thousand. And then an allowance for permit fees for a grand total, again, of eleven million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Typically, we look for the project to be complete within three years and, and all funds expended within that three-year timeframe. Again, if we have problems, we can address those as they come up. Uh, the, the interest rate on this loan, just like on other loans, you can elect to take the lower rate at the time that we commit the funds to the project or whenever we close the loan, whichever is lower. And this proposal is at one and a quarter percent, one point two five percent for forty years. So based on that loan amount, that'll equal a monthly payment of twenty-two thousand, forty-six dollars. So if the rate drops below one point two five, by the time we close, you can elect to take that lower rate. But that one point two five is as low as, about as low as I've ever seen it. And I've been in the program for about twenty-two years, so that's a fantastic rate. Uh, the loan will be secured by a revenue bond. The requirement for a debt service reserve is the same on this loan as it is on the previous loans. That is an amount equal to ten percent of the annual debt payment that you would deposit in that debt service reserve account. And that's an emergency account to be used to make payments if, at some point in the future, revenues aren't to the point where you can make payments from regular monthly revenues. That's just a rainy day emergency account. The deposit on that is, would be two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty cents per month, which is ten percent of the estimated debt service. And once the total in that account equals one year's debt service, which will be two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, you no longer have to make any additional deposits to that account. Along with the debt service reserve, there is a short-lived asset reserve, which is for replacement of your depreciating assets like tank painting and rebuilding pump motors and replacing valves and those kind of things. Based on the information that was provided in the preliminary engineering report, the estimated annual deposit into that account would be sixty-eight-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, which would allow you to continue to replace those assets as they wear out. Just like on typical projects, we will review, be required to review the plans and specifications prior to bidding. The American iron and steel requirements will apply to this project. That means that the contractor will be responsible for buying iron and steel products, which will be your pipe, your clamps, bolts, those kind of things, anything that's made out of iron and steel. It will be required to source those from American-made vendors first. If for some reason they aren't available or if they're cost prohibitive, then we can look and address those issues. But for the most part, he'll be required to source American-made iron and steel for this project. The legal services requirements are the same. You'll need a legal services agreement. The local attorney will provide evidence that you have rights of way in place for the project. Any, if there's not a mandatory connection ordinance in place, we'll need to see executive order user agreements for the two-hundred-and-sixty proposed taps. Interim financing or a construction loan will be required on this project, which is typical. The, this project was based on there being at least three-thousand-and-thirty residential users, forty-seven non-residentials, that's your commercials and industrials, and then the one large volume user on the system. And we used to include a proposed rate schedule in the letter of conditions. We no longer do that. But it is your responsibility to maintain rates at a level that will allow you to pay all operating costs plus your debt service and reserve accounts. Prior to us approving the bid, we'll need evidence that you have the contribution you're required to have on hand. At any time, if you need technical assistance with your rates, if you need training or technical assistance for members of council or anybody involved in the water or sewer, for that matter, systems, that assistance is available to you free of charge through organizations like the South Carolina Rural Water Association and the Southeast Rural Community Assistance Project, RCAP, R-C-A-P. And if you're not familiar with them, I have contact information for each of those agencies. And they'll be glad to help you any way they can. Of course, we'll need all the applicable permits from DHEC, DOT, if they're involved, those organizations, that'll be a normal part of the project. We talked about cost overruns and excess funds, contract review. A full-time construction inspector will be required. That'll be covered under your engineering agreement. And we'll go into the construction part of the project in a lot more detail at the pre-construction conference, just prior to starting construction. Let's see. I think that has everything covered. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. It's been a long process getting to this point. But we're to the point now where if council votes to approve this letter of conditions and proceed with the project, then we can go ahead and commit the funding to you for this project in the amount of, again, eight million, three-nineteen loan and two-million, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in grant.
Mr. Huck, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Originally, I think we had one million less. And I believe you all were gracious enough to give us or find funding to give us an additional million dollars. Is that correct?
The project cost has changed several times. Yeah, this is the latest cost estimate that we have. So yeah, all the increases that were proposed were included in this funding package, yes.
Any questions, members of council? Hearing none, then I guess we need to do a vote for me to execute the letter of, the acceptance letter for the grant for the Earls Project. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of accepting the grant, please signify by raising your hand. Posers the same. The motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Huck.
Thank you.
Lane, did you have anything you want to add?
No, just that when we did our rate increase last year, we included the funding that was going to be required for this project.
You probably better talk into that so our citizens don't be like, "What y'all doing now?"
No, when we approved the rate increase and the water availability fee increase last year, it was for the funding that was going to be earmarked for this project. So we don't have to look into that this go around.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm not overly familiar with the scope of this.
Where the lines, these lines are running. Do, does this line run down Earl Project? Run down the, what's the road? Mr. Miller, what's this road that runs by the community center down there in Earl? County Line? Is that County Line Road?
Yeah, that's Seaboard.
County Line.
County Line Road.
There you go. Go ahead.
Does it take up the entirety of the County Line Road?
Not the entirety of the County Line Road. It does go all the way to Andrews on 521 and Seaboard. And Country Club Road, I think, is the southernmost road.
Okay.
I'm trying to place the community center that you're talking about on County Line.
I guess.
It's on, uh, Club Road.
Yeah, Country Club.
Country Club Road. By the Pentecostal Church up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It includes that.
It does.
And this is Tad Road also, right?
This will include Tad, yeah. Which would, this will basically pick up where we left off with the Tri-O project.
Correct.
And all the way to Andrews.
That's Seaboard, Joe.
Very good.
That's Tad Road. Good.
Any other questions?
Yes, LMI component in this grant.
Not that I'm aware of. If Mr. Huck's still on the line, I'm not aware of LMI. I mean, that's mostly for CDBG.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
All right, good.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All right. Thank you, Lane. I appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
So I did not specifically put anything underneath the county supervisor report due to the nature of what I'm going to talk about right now. I didn't want it to become an issue. Wanted to make sure we dealt with it. We are in, well, have reevaluated our hot topic, hot button item, recycling centers. Seems to be the big topic of Williamsburg County. And we have developed a solution for that issue that people were facing. So what we are going to do is we're going to dedicate six-hundred-and-eighty hours of operation time per week to our recycling centers. So we will be having, how the schedule will work, and it will be posted in the weeks coming. And we will make sure we do robocalls. We will put it in the newspaper. We'll put it on social media. We'll send it out in the mail so that everybody's aware of the time changes. So ten of the high-volume locations will be open from, will be open twelve hours a day. High-volume only, twelve hours a day, ten of them. The next, the other ten will be open on Saturdays only. And they will be open for eight hours a day. So high-volume will be open Monday through Friday, twelve hours a day. And the others that do not spark much traffic will be open on Saturdays only. The recycling center workers will split those twelve-hour days so that we do not have to account for lunch breaks and things like that. They will be there to break each other. And it will have zero budgetary impact to the budget.
Have you identified which site is?
Have you identified which side is designated as high-volume?
I have.
Okay.
Do I have to tell you at this point?
I would like to hear.
I wanted to make sure it was in writing for now. And then you all can discuss it with your constituents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
We want to make sure it's in writing. Because I don't want someone to say, "Oh, you know, she said this or that." So, but yes, it is ten sites. And each of them, just to give you a heads up, every council member has one that will be open that is considered a high-volume area. Every council member will have one in their district, at least one in their district.
And if for some reason supervisor, people are not really going to these sites. I know they're wanting the site open all the time. Are we going to, is there, maybe we can revisit going back to the original hours?
So I did, over the last few months, I've been doing a research on the volumes of all of those locations. That's why I know that there is ten of them that really don't get a whole lot of traffic. So yes, you know, we can revisit it as a council if that's what, you know, you all want to do. But just to kind of, you know, let us refocus on the big picture. And that's moving the county forward. And let's get past the issue of trash. This idea came up after my supervisor's chat yesterday.
And I understand that these ten sites are only going to be open on Saturdays only?
Ten sites will be open Monday through Friday. And then the others that are not considered high-volume will just be open on Saturday.
You know, I know that in the beginning, what you did was you did an hourly count of how many cars that came in to the recycle. And you based the hours on that. And I thought that was the ideal way to go because we use data. But, well, I guess we need to look at it. I can understand how some people may have complained about this site not being open every day, twelve hours a day. But I've been in metropolitan city where they only collect trash once a day. You know, and it just seemed like, I mean, just, and I know that we do have people that want the sites to be open anytime that they decide to go. But, you know, that's the economic for the county. We did, I thought, which was the best thing when we went hour for hour, how many cars came in. And we did the, opened them up based on that information. But, and I can understand why a lot of people want that. But I thought that was the best idea, what we did. But, you know, in order to move the county forward, I certainly would be interested to see how this is going to work. And I applaud you and your staff for trying these different things. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, I know you said, just to put it on record, there are no other recycling centers that are open every day in the state of South Carolina?
No. What it is, is not all of them in one county is not open all day, every day.
All day, every day.
They do have one or so that maybe open on a Sunday only or a Saturday and then maybe on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday. But this is a different, a little bit of a different configuration.
Again, I think this is good. Like I said, the Council Mills said, "There's nothing wrong with giving it a try." But you said this came about, the changes as a result of this soup chat on?
Well, no. I don't know if you guys had heard, but our recycling centers signage had been vandalized. People were taking them down. People were changing the hours on them. And it created, was creating some issues. And I've talked to, you know, talked to the citizens yesterday and wanted to make sure that, or wanted to discuss with them that we have made this such a political debate in reference to recycling centers and them being open or closed, that really we're being, we're becoming distracted about what's really happening in the county and the growth in the county. So to eliminate that variable, let's try another option. So this is the option, as long as it had no budgetary impact on what was already approved by members of council in 2019.
Well, I would say this, in my district, I think it was admirable what we've done and I think was equitable across the board. I'm just concerned a little bit about those areas where the site's going to be open just on Saturday. Now, I think that's going to be more of a lash back from the citizens as opposed to the way it is now. Because in my area, and this is just one district, it was working fine, perfectly fine. But we, like you say, you listen, you listen to the citizens and you react. So we will see how this works. And if it doesn't work, like Councilwoman Sue Hamm said, we'll try and see. And we have to revert back there. We just have to do what's best.
Correct. And I, you just, you all know that, we are not going to please everyone.
No.
But we will give it a fair shot at ensuring that we are letting our citizens know that we are listening to you. And we, if we can adjust, if it wasn't something that I knew we can adjust as far as time, then trust me, I wouldn't have done it. But I believe we can see how this is going to go. Councilman Floyd, did you say something? I don't know if you said something else.
I didn't quite understand Ms. Hamm's question, what her question was about no sites being open every day. Was that your question?
Yeah, my question was, are there sites that are open every day in the state of South Carolina?
Okay. And I don't know the answer to that, but I would, and I'm not, I'll answer that after the meeting. I know one county is open on Sunday afternoon because I frequent the county every weekend.
But I mean, just every day though, Sunday through Sunday.
Not all of them. And I say that because some, we've got twenty of them. We have one of the larger amounts of recycling centers in the state. Most even Beaufort County, I believe they only have like fourteen of them. But it's different dynamics. I've researched every single recycling center and know all of them are not open every day, all day.
Well, I don't want to keep sounding like a dead horse. But if in 2019 it was voted to reduce the hours to save the budget and that seemed to be working, I think that was a great plan. However, with this new plan, since it is not going to impact the budget, I'm like Councilwoman Woods, I'm willing to try it. However, if we have to revisit and go back to the way it was, then I'm open to that as well.
Correct.
But I think the citizens need to have that on record to understand what is really going on.
And I want to say one thing too, Councilwoman Hamm. People, they want all the services. There are people in the county that will want every site open seven days a week. But what they don't understand, sometime you have to make adjustments. And if you were to do that, you may possibly have to increase some taxes. And when you mention increasing taxes, everybody's going to flare up. But they don't tell the downside, they tell the upside. "Let's open all these sites every day, all day long." That's what they want. But they don't look at what it's going to take to do that. It takes money to do anything. And something of that. It takes money to do anything, and something of that magnitude would definitely impact our budget. And like Sue said, we did some adjustments because of this, to try to make the budget work and stay within budget. So we could have opened them every day too, but then what would happen to your taxes? Oh, they don't talk about that. But anyway, this point of reference.
Yes, it was voted to reduce the amount of hours in 2019, and then it was only three days it was open a week. So remember, there were some issues about that. Well, on Sunday, we want to make sure that they're open on Monday, and so on and so forth. So we have been playing the, trying to make sure we stay within the budget that was approved, while also adding convenience to the cause.
Can you tell them if they could go on YouTube or the website or Facebook, what timeline they can go back and see when that was voted on?
It was voted on back in 10, is it 10/24, 2019? 10/24, 2019. But you can do a recap of the supervisor's chat that I did last night, and I rolled it all out. But yes, citizens can go back to understand where this started and why the hours were cut. But this, I think, is probably one of the better methods, because again, like I said before, before I took office, they were open every day, but they were shut down for four hours to allow for lunch breaks, and then they reopened, and none of them have ever stayed open until 7:00 PM. And we have been doing a 7:00 PM opening or closing on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So now we're just going to carry that over. Any other questions? Hearing none? All right, we need a motion for adjournment. Any questions, discussions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, Williamsburg County citizens and members of council, and those who have came to join us in council. Thank you.